Good evening. I now call the January 13th meeting of the School Board to order. We have a full board tonight, so nine voting board members present this evening. In the opening, as you're willing and able, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we have the Student Representatives' Report from Ms. Sharman.
Thank you. Students in the NPE Band Orchestra and Chorus are undergoing final preparations for their annual winter concert, which will be held this upcoming Thursday, January 16th, at 9:30 a.m. for NPE students and staff, followed by a 7:00 p.m. concert for friends and family. The students have been working hard all semester under the direction of Miss Haley Dobbs and Mrs. Jane Urban and cannot wait to perform for everyone. This upcoming Friday, January 17th, will be NPE's Free-to-Be Friday for January 2020. Students are encouraged to wear their blue NPE t-shirts or any other blue shirt to celebrate NPE's goal of always being responsible, safe, and respectful. West will have their MLK Assembly on Friday, January 17th, arranged by second grade students and teachers. This year, West is collecting money for a school in Namibia to continue to honor King's legacy of equality and opportunity for all. Friday, January 24th, is Bingo Night at West. There will be one session from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. and another from 7:30 to 8:30. Students and their families are encouraged to chip in and come out for a fun night of games and prizes. West is fortunate to host acclaimed British author Thomas Taylor, revered around the world for his books Malamander, Gargantous, and many others. Taylor also designed the front cover for the first edition of J.K. Rowling's famed novel, Harry Potter and the Philosopher's Stone. Third, fourth, and fifth graders at West will be able to partake in the magic and meet Mr. Taylor on Monday, January 27th, in the West auditorium. SRS will be hosting a fundraiser at Iron Hill tomorrow, January 14th. Iron Hill will donate 20% of your bill to SRS Home and School if you present the voucher found on the SRS website. Mrs. Connolly and Mrs. Aronowitz will host knitting club at SRS on Wednesdays from 3:30 to 4:30. The first session will begin January 22nd and is capped at eight students, creating a close-knit environment for learning and creativity. Students will need a skein of yarn and size-nine knitting needles to participate. The Middle School's Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service will take place this Friday. Students and staff will spend the entire day, both in school and out in the community, in service of others. This day would not be possible without the outstanding efforts of Mrs. Lisa Cobb and her MLK Day team. Come out to Swarthmore Pizza on Tuesday, January 21st, to support the SHMS Service Project. Purchase any food items between 4:00 and 9:00 p.m., and 15% of the proceeds will go to the Haven Healing Hearts Foundation. Last week, the Strathhaven Wrestling Team beat Upper Darby for the first time in 30 years with a whopping 48-26 final score. Go Panthers! Tomorrow, January 14th, the diversity trainers are headed for the middle school to talk to the eighth graders about diversity and inclusivity. The group's focus is to foster a sense of community among each class they visit, highlighting how there is more to someone than what's on the surface, but these differences only make us stronger. On Wednesday, January 15th, Minithon will host a pop fit event in the cafeteria from 5:30 to 6:30. Biology teacher Ms. Shalika, who leads Zumba classes for other members of the community, will teach students Zumba. Admission is $5, and all proceeds will go towards the Minithon Dance Event later this year. And finally, this Thursday, the Strathhaven Speech and Debate Team will hold a fundraiser at Panera on Baltimore Pike from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. All proceeds will go towards funding the team's many trips around the year, from Albuquerque to Chicago, and your participation is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. There's a lot of food to be eaten for fundraising, it seems, and I enjoy the Close Knit Knitting Club. Well done. Next up, we have the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Grandy. First, I'd like to comment on a couple of items on our agenda this evening. Under the Personnel Section, Item D in particular, you will notice a significant number of additional assignments requested for approval this evening. These additional assignments correspond with vacancies we currently have. They're not additional classes being added to any schedule. You might ask why we would fill these vacancies by having our current staff work an additional assignment, and is predominantly for two reasons. First, teachers who experience an FMLA event without any or very little notice create a situation where we don't have enough time to advertise the vacancy or interview the candidates. And secondly, the pool of teaching candidates has shrunk considerably over the last several years, to the point that some positions, such as math, special education, world languages, and some sciences may not even get a single applicant, or if we do, we wouldn't necessarily want that person teaching in front of our students. And then, under the Finance Section, Item B, we are requesting approval of a facility temporary licensing agreement with Newman University. Because Dr. Brown joined us for several board meetings to discuss the possibility of changing the location for the Strathhaven High School graduation, I want to be clear. This agreement is for us to hold the Strathhaven High School graduation at Newman University on June 5th, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. Dr. Brown did announce this to our parents earlier this year, but because the agreement is just coming before the board at this time, I thought I should make it clear so that no one thinks it's a change at this time. And then, secondly, I'd like to talk about an item that's not on our agenda. One year ago, almost to the day, I reported on the activation of the statewide reporting system called Safe to Say Something. Safe to Say Something is an anonymous tip line for students, parents, and community members to report suspicious or concerning behavior. The Safe to Say Something campaign is designed to teach students, teachers, and administrators how to recognize warning signs and signals, especially within social media and in photos and videos, of individuals who may be a threat to themselves or others, and to say something before it's too late. I'm appreciative of the Safe to Say Something program, that it is in place, and that our community, and in particular, our students, have taken it so seriously. Our students care about their fellow students and want to keep them safe. I can tell you firsthand that the tips we receive are anonymous, and each one is taken seriously and investigated. I'm also very appreciative of Chief Splain and the Nether Providence Police Department, and Chief Stufflett of the Swarthmore Borough Police Department. Their partnership with us in this initiative has been, in a word, extraordinary. To anyone who is listening this evening, if you see something, hear something, or that little voice in your head thinks that something doesn't feel quite right, say something to a trusted adult, or use the anonymous reporting system, which can be accessed via the Safe to Say app, their website, or 24/7 crisis hotline. It can be used by children, it can be used by adults, and it is anonymous. And if you're not sure if you should submit a tip, please submit the tip. It could help someone. And Dr. Grandy, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Palmer. And I'll just echo the importance of that program, and I think, again, not just people who are out there listening, you know, we encourage people to pass along information with anyone you know about the Safe to Say program. It really is critically important. So, moving on, I have one board announcement to make. The board did meet prior to this meeting an executive session to obtain privileged advice from council and to discuss a personnel matter. Next up, we do have one focus topic on the agenda tonight, and Dr. Palmer, I'll ask you to introduce it for us this evening.
Tonight, Ms. Q will be presenting the proposed 2020-2021 preliminary budget. The budget itself is still very much a work-in-process. We'll continue to refine our estimates all the way through June, at which point the board will adopt its final budget for 2021. Procedurally, tonight marks the beginning of the required steps toward the adoption of that final budget. Tonight, the proposed preliminary budget is presented to the board and the community, but no action will be taken. Ms. Q's presentation, which she's queuing up now, and the proposed preliminary budget will be posted on our website, under the department's business office, as well as on board docs. On January 27th, our next board meeting, the board will adopt the preliminary budget. We'll continue to work on the budget, as we have done up till now, all the way until we get to the final budget, and then in May, Ms. Q will present the proposed final budget. That budget will go on display for everyone to see prior to June 22nd, at which point the board will adopt the final budget. So, Ms. Q, I see your presentation has now come up, so the floor is yours.
Good evening. Time flies when you're working on numbers. This is my fourth budget, and things are still as unpredictable as that first budget. We are very early in the budget process. This is my first budget at WSSD that is in the presidential election year. Let me explain what that means. In a presidential election year, the PA primary is moved up one month. As a result of that shift, the requirements for a preliminary budget are also moved up one month. That one month has a huge effect. Doing projections for the current year becomes more difficult with so much less information to process. Getting estimations for revenues and future expenditures is more difficult, as there are so many unknowns when you are talking about a timeframe so far into the future. But, we do have some givens. Our PZers or the state pension plan rates are still going up, not as steeply, but still going up. We've included a first look at our healthcare rates and other contractual commitments that are included in the proposed preliminary budget. But as I noted earlier, we are very early in the process, and many items need to be fleshed out before the final budget in June. As we begin the budget cycle, we keep the district goals in mind. The primary goal is to provide equity and access and excellence in our educational programming. We need to continue to work on our curriculum improvement cycle, to focus on increasing rigor and innovation in our academic programming, and align all those curriculums with our state standards and emerging best practices. While we work on all of those things, we continue to reimagine our educational program in ways that will yield recommendations for repurposing education, fostering innovation in our academic programs, and supporting every student's achievement, but work to contain growth of those district costs. We continue to prioritize the study of the adolescent sleep needs and late-school start times. This work is not yet finished, but the work continues. As we work through the budget process, we work to continue to close the structural deficit within our general fund budget. We need to continue to refine our needs and develop funding plans for our five-year, long-range facility plan. When we work on the budget, we break it down into operational components. In the area of revenue, we have examined revenues to find historic trends and to project future revenue growth. Unfortunately, we are waiting for information from various sources. The state and federal governments haven't even discussed budgets at this point, so we have no idea what our state and federal funding streams will be. We assume that we'll be at the same funding level as we are this year, but we have no indication of the governmental intent. When it comes to department and school budgets, each year we ask the department heads and school principals to provide their budgets at a relatively flat growth rate for the coming year. There are areas of change that need to be addressed due to things like student enrollment increases or changes, and changes in programmatic needs. There are also major cost drivers. Salaries and benefits make up 70% of the district expenditure budget. The cost of our staff is included in the proposed preliminary budget based on the collective bargaining agreements. One part of those costs is PZers, the state-defined pension plan. The employer contribution rate continues to rise from year to year. For 2021, the rate will raise from 34.29% to 34.51%, or an additional .22%. That increase represents approximately $200,000 increase, but we'll come back to this later. We have to continue to examine expenditures. Some areas of the budget contain estimates for services or supports at this point. We continue to work on refining the budget, and we will develop firmer estimations of the district needs in various budget areas. And, did I mention we're very early in the budget process? Let's look at the district expenditures from a functional level. By function, I mean those large expenditure categories, such as instructional programs, support services, et cetera. Approximately 60% of the total expenditure budget is for instructional programs. This includes regular instruction, special education, vocational education, community college, and other instructional programs, like summer programs, homebound instruction, and so on. Support services are 29% of the budget. This area includes all support areas, including guidance, psychology, social work, the nurse, library, administration, operations, transportation, technology, and the business office. Basically, any area that supports the instructional programs. Debt service makes up just under 9% of the budget. This is the interest and principal being paid on the district's general obligation bonds and notes. Student activities and athletics are approximately 2% of the budget. This is all the sports, as well as the student activities, including speech and debate, musical, band, yearbook, newspaper, class advisors, and so on. The budgetary reserve are funds that are set aside in case an unforeseen issue arises that needs immediate attention. This represents less than one-half of 1% of the total budget. But let's drill down further into these expenditures from what the state calls an object point of view. The object code represents the services or commodities purchased by the district. Approximately 42% of the total expenditure budget is for salaries, and benefits makes up another 28% for the approximate 70% of the total budget. Purchased services includes professional services like therapists, consultants, legal counsel, contractors, tuition to specialized schools, the intermediate union, program costs, payments to the community college, repairs, leases, such as copiers, and insurance. This area represents 16.5% of the budget. Principal interest and fees makes up just under 10% of the budget. Fees includes items like membership fees, licenses, certifications. Supplies and equipment are textbooks, small equipment, utilities, instructional and non-instructional supplies, and software, and that's 3% of the budget. And as previously said, the budgetary reserve represents less than one-half of 1% of the total budget. To continue the process, let's drill down even further on some specific expenditure We have talked about this at previous presentations, so this is not a new slide. However, I'm revisiting it with updated information for the current 2021 projections. Each time I present this slide, I feel like I, as though it can speak for itself. First, I want to be clear. The pension plan is a state system set and driven by the state for the pension benefit. The costs, the employee and employer contributions, and everything related to it, is set by the state. The local school district has no control over the pension benefit or the cost to the district. To focus in on the slide, in 2009-10, the employer contribution rate was 4.78. That cost the district $1.4 million. The state revenue was another $729,000 that comes back to us, so in essence, we paid the same $729,000. The increase from the prior year was only $46,000. Just two years later, in 1112, that rate rose to 8.65%. That meant that our cost went up to $2.7 million. The subsidy went up to 1.3, but the cost to the district for that year was almost $500,000 higher. Moving forward three more years, the rate goes up to 21.4%. The total cost to the district was 6.9. Our subsidy, 3.4. The cost to the district for that one year is $745,000. Moving forward into 1718, the rate is 32.57%. You're now at over $10 million in expenditure. The subsidy is 5.4 million. The cost to the district is another $488,000. Moving forward to the current period, we're at 34.51%. That's $12.6 million in expenditure. We're projecting the state will give us 6.3 million back, and it's only a $216,000 increase. I say that tongue-in-cheek. I want to point out that the growth rate has slowed down over the last three years on this, as this chart shows. It goes from 8.5 to 2.62. However, growth is still growth, and PZer still requires the district to pay 34 cents for every dollar of salary or wages. WSSD will get 17 cents back, but we're still paying that additional 17 cents. It has been a dozen years since pension growth was anywhere near the 910 growth of .4. Even now, we haven't made that mark. In slightly over a decade, the pension and employer contribution rate has increased over 600% from 4.78 to 34.51%. Annually, the gross number is now more than $11 million over what it was paid in 2009-10. If the 910 rate was stable and the amount was consistent, we would have paid just under $19 million for PZers in these years using the annual salary amounts for each year. Instead, we have or will pay over $87 million. That is an increase of over $68 million. For anyone who's thinking, well, the state reimburses half of that, we're still over $34 million. What does $34 million represent from our current budget? It's just under 40% of our budget. In mils, it's almost 23 mils of the current 46.75 mils. That's quite a number. As you can see, the pension has been the single largest driver of increases in our budget over the last decade. I want to stress again that it is the single largest driver, but it has something that the district has no control over. The pension is set by the state, and the state directs what the school districts and the employees have to pay into the pension plan. None of this is within the district's control. As you may be aware, pension reform was passed in 1718. It went into effect for PZers in July of this past year, 2019. All new teachers and new school employees will be in the new pension plans. However, the projected savings from this plan are not projected to affect school districts until 2035 to 2050. That's based off of the Independent Fiscal Office Report dated June 3rd of 2017. The IFO's actuarial report projects that the district will see a slight increase from 2018-19 through 2122 for the higher initial costs of those new retirement plans. 2023 to 2024 shows that the higher initial costs of the new plans continue. And 3435 through 4950 shows the employer contribution rates finally declining. So the expectation that PZers rates will increase every year until 3435. The increases will be less than prior years, but even a half of a percent amounts to almost $200,000 to the district. To look at this a slightly different way, I talk about it's 32.51%. Based on a report from PZers, here's how we arrive at that 34.51%. Seven, actually, I have a mathematical error on that slide. 7.37 of the 34.51 is for the normal employer cost. .18 is for the Act V contribution. The Act V contribution is that slight increase to the pension plans for the new plans? There it is. .82 is for healthcare contributions. So in actual fact, 8.37 is the total employer rate. What's the extra piece? 26.14% is the unfunded pension liability that the district is bearing and all districts across the state are bearing. This was created when the state raised benefits and reduced payments into the system several years ago. I cannot stress enough, the school district has no say in these changes. In fact, a lot of districts wanted to make higher payments at that time, but were not allowed to. As a result, today, there is a significant unfunded liability that school districts need to pay to make up for those changes from those years ago. I have to change that number. The next large cost driver of the district is special education costs. The district works diligently to meet the needs of our students. In some cases, our students need extra support. In 1213, the district had spent $11.3 million in special education costs. These costs include salaries, benefits for teachers and aides, purchased professional services, including occupational, physical, and speech therapists, intermediate unit supports, supplies, equipment, as well as transportation, psychologists, social workers, and other supports. In 1819, the district spent $15.8 million for our special education supports. To explain this slide, the blue bars are the district costs. The red line is our state and federal subsidies against those costs. The real issue here is our state and federal support of these programs. In 2012-13, the state provided $1.8 million in support of our special education program, and the federal government provided $604,000 in support through the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA, for a total of $2.4 million in support, or 21.7% of our total cost. By contrast, in 1819, the state's support had risen to just over $2 million, and the IDEA contribution dropped to $579,000, for a total of $2.6 million, or a 16.7% contribution against our cost. To say this another way, the percentage of the state and federal government contribution to the district's cost has dropped down to 16.7% in 1819 from a 21.7% contribution in 1213. In the seven years projected here, the district costs have risen by over 40%, while the state and federal subsidies have only risen by less than 8%. Our local taxpayers have provided and continue to provide the funds for our children's education. However, the state and federal governments bear this responsibility as well. Their contribution in the form of subsidies and grants have not kept pace with the increasing student needs and increasing costs. As administrators and school board members, we speak out with legislators about funding. We also urge our taxpayers to reach out to your legislatures and legislators and express your concerns directly to them about the responsibility to fund public education. It does make a difference when constituents contact their legislators. So, we have started discussing funding, so let's switch over to the other side of the Remember, we're very early in the process, and we work diligently to refine this budget. Local revenues makes up 80% of the revenue budget. Included in local revenues are property taxes, per capita taxes, transfer taxes, interest earnings, facility rentals, and other miscellaneous revenues. State subsidies include basic education, special education subsidies, transportation subsidy, what is called the rental sinking fund, which is actually the state's commitment to reimburse the district for some of their construction debt. Social Security and PZers reimbursements, property tax reduction allocation. The property tax allocations have not been released by PDE as of yet. The estimate in the 2021 budget uses the current year numbers. As you can see, state revenues make up just under 20% of the revenue budget. Federal revenues are made up of Title I, Title II, and Title V, and make up less than one-half of 1% of our revenue budget. For 2021, budget does still rely on the fund balance to balance our budget. For 2021, the structural deficit is $916,000 and is approximately 1% of the total budgetary Since we're talking about revenue sources, I'm bringing back another slide I used when I presented this budget information previously. This slide was originally from the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, PSBA. I've updated with the 2017 information that was released by the U.S. Census Bureau in the Public Education Finances Report of 2017, released in May of 2017. in May of two thousand and nineteen. This slide shows reliance on state and local dollars for education funding. The national average for state funding for K through twelve educate, public education is forty-seven-point-one percent. PA ranks forty-fourth out of fifty, and with their thirty-eight-point-seven percent state education funding. However, PA did make it to the top ten, but in an area I'm not sure we really want to be in the top ten. It's in the reliance of local revenue sources to pay for public education. PA is ranked seventh. This means out of fifty states, PA is seventh in the reliance on local dollars to fund K through twelve public education. By the way, just as an amusing thing, eight out of the ten, top ten states that rely on local dollars are here on the East Coast. I guess I should be encouraged, though, because in the four, the two thousand and fourteen numbers, Pennsylvania was forty-sixth, so we moved up two latches, and we were fourth in the reliance on local sources. So we've improved. Unfortunately, the reliance on local revenue sources continues. Again, I urge our taxpayers to call or write their legislatures, legislators. Education funding is their responsibility, and they need to be reminded of that. Speaking of reliance and sources, let's look, let's look at this made up through the properties of Wallingford-Swathmore. When we look at local resources, most districts are made up of residential, commercial, agricultural, lands and lots, trailers, gas mineral, gas oil minerals. The local taxes are then spread over that mixed use of land within the district. This report is based off of the State Tax Equalization Board Land Use Report of two thousand and eighteen. Unfortunately, that mix is not the case for Wallingford-Swathmore. WSSD is ninety-four percent residential and six percent of all other types. In fact, as you can see, WSSD takes first place in the county with their reliance on residential properties over all other school districts in the county. I did take this one step further and looked at this over the entire state of Pennsylvania. Wallingford-Swathmore still holds first place within the state for their ninety-four percent reliance on residential properties. Second, South Park, a school district near Pittsburgh, comes in second at ninety-one percent residential. We strive to be first in a variety of different areas, but first in this is not one of them. However, as we look at this, particularly in comparison to other districts, it causes a realization that we do not have land for growth. Without the commercial tax base, this places a higher burden on our homeowners. To open our revenue book a little further, in two thousand and twenty-one, revenues increased by two-point-six million dollars, or three-point-one-six percent. The increase in revenues over nineteen-twenty is made up of two-point-two million dollars from local revenues. Approximately four-hundred thousand dollars comes from state and federal revenues. But as you can see, our federal funding is down based off of our current Title One and Title Two funding year. As with prior years, we're completing our budgets well in advance of the state, and we use the current subsidy amounts to project our coming year. Over the next six months, we should have a better idea about state and federal funding, but we may not. As we know, the state and federal governments can be a bit tardy as they work on their This leads us to a very delicate balancing act. How do we maintain an appropriate fund balance while minimizing the taxpayer burden and have the time to reimagine the quality education programs we deliver to the WSSD community? We have worked diligently to maintain that balance and present this two thousand and twenty-one proposed preliminary budget with a three-point-four percent tax increase and a reduction in fund balance of just under a million dollars. We continue to work to close that structural deficit and continue to deliver the quality educational programs to our students. I have said that the proposed preliminary budget deficit is just under a million dollars. This could be less if our revenues are higher than our current assumptions, or our expenditures come in lower than our current estimates. We will continue to refine our projections and estimates between now and the final June budget. The structural deficit can also be affected if no major issues arise and we do not use the budgetary reserve at all during two thousand and twenty-one. We could have a structural deficit of just over a half million dollars to nine-hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars. Let's talk about local tax structure a little bit. A district can raise taxes based on what is known as Act One of two thousand and six. Each year, the state sets what Act One, the Act One index based off of two indices. They are the statewide average weekly wage and the employer cost index. These indices are averaged over a three-year period, and then the base Act One index is set. For two thousand and twenty-one, that is two-point-six. So, the Act One index is basically a cost of living increase. There are districts with an aid ratio above point four. Those districts get an additional increase in Act One ranging from point four to one-point-seven. In Delaware County, eight districts currently have what is known as the adjusted Act One index. These rates range from three-point-two to as high as four-point-one instead of the two-point-six base index. From there, districts can apply for exceptions. There are only a few viable exceptions left. They include school construction, which is grandfathered debt, which the district is not eligible for, special education, and retirement contributions. The retirement contribution exception is based on a base wage from two thousand and eleven-twelve. It then computes that the increase in the Peasors' employer contribution rate versus the Act One index increase. If the Peasors' increase is more than the index, the district would be eligible, eligible to apply for that exception amount. With the low increase of the Peasors' rate, the district is not eligible for this exception this year, and if projections remain the same for Peasors' rate, it will be difficult for the Peasors' exceptions to be used in the future. The special education exception is based on a comparison of two years of special education expenses. For the two thousand and twenty-one budget, the two years are two thousand and seventeen-eighteen and two thousand and eighteen-nineteen. The costs of these two years are compared, and if your special education expenditures increased, that increase is again compared against the Act One index. If the increase exceeds that Act One index, then the district is eligible to apply for that exception amount. Please remember, this exception is based on expenditures already incurred and borne by the district and the taxpayers. If you do not file for the exceptions at the preliminary budget, you cannot request them at a later point in the year. It is prudent to apply for the exceptions at this early point in the budget process. Any tax increases beyond the Act One index and exceptions would then have to go to voter As previously discussed, the Act One index is two-point-six for two thousand and twenty-one. Two-point-six represents one-point-six million dollars, or if you take a point-nine-nine or a ninety-nine percent collection rate, it's two-point-one-six-seven-eight-nine-four-three. As noted, the district is eligible for one exception, and it is for expenditures previously incurred and borne by the district. The current estimate of this exception is approximately five-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars, or five-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars at a ninety-nine percent collection rate. This budget is far from final. What this proposed preliminary budget does is preserve the district's ability to provide the greatest flexibility for the district as we further refine the budget. Again, I say, we are very early in the budgeting process, and we will be working to refine this budget as we work towards the final budget in June. People talk about our fund balance. For our general fund, we have a nine-million-dollar fund balance at the end of eighteen-nineteen. This is comprised of a hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand dollars of what is considered non-spendable, and that's just prepaid items at the end of the year. Then we have two-point-five million dollars in committed items. The committed items are made up of nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for Peasors, the employer retirement rate stabilization, one-point-three million dollars of self-insurance rate stabilization, and two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for debt service. In addition, we also have eight-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars in to balance the nineteen-twenty budget. That leaves five-hundred-and, five-million-four-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars as our unassigned fund balance. The state permits us to have up to eight percent in that area. Eight percent would be six-point-seven million dollars, or at six-point-five percent. With a further projection to reduce the fund balance by nine-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars, the unassigned fund balance would drop to four-point-five million dollars, or five-point-two percent. To add an extra interesting layer, the district not that long ago went through a state audit. You're required to do those every three to four years, and while our state auditor was here, they asked me a question. Why is your fund balance so low? And I said, well, the state says we can have up to eight percent. And they're going, no, you don't understand. A fund balance, according to generally accepted accounting principles, is supposed to be three months of your annual expenditures. Well, we have an eighty-seven-million-dollar budget. Three months is twenty-one million dollars. No district I know of has that as their fund balance, and I went back to this auditor and said, again, the state law says I can only have up to eight percent. And they're going, no, 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 you have to have three months of expenditures. And I'm going, no, 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 I can't. And we went back and forth, so realistically, we're at five-point-four, or at the end of two thousand and twenty-one, four-and-a-half million dollars, when the auditors think we should be more towards twenty-one million dollars. Next month, there will be a presentation regarding capital project needs for the district. The district has capital needs, and trying, and the district has capital needs, and we're trying to maintain our buildings throughout the district. At that presentation, the district capital needs over the next five-plus years will be presented. The current estimate is in slightly in excess of fourteen million dollars. Between the capital reserve of seven-point-one million dollars at the end of eighteen-nineteen and my unassigned fund balance of five-point-four, which I've already said is dropping to four-point-five, we can't cover the fourteen-million-dollar worth of capital projections that we're going to present next month. So what's next? In two weeks, the board can take action on the proposed preliminary budget. On February fourth, Governor Wolf will present his budget, which will give us the first indication of where the state may be going with our expenditures, with our funding streams. On the twenty-fourth, we'll be doing a capital projects presentation. On May eleventh, I'll be presenting the proposed final budget. On May twenty-sixth, the board can take action on the proposed final budget. On June eighth, the final budget presentation will be made, and on June twenty-second, the board can take action on that final budget. So, any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Q. I think that's an extremely helpful presentation and very thorough, and we really appreciate that. I think it's clear that, you know, over time, while it hasn't necessarily happened abruptly, the state has really shifted a rather enormous proportion of funding onto local school districts, which of course has created a lot of pressure locally around adequate funding. So I hope, as you mentioned, that this does trigger some of our residents to contact their legislators to try to get the state to do more. At the same time, I think it's important to say, despite these pressures, you know, the school district does continue to thrive in so many ways, but it does point to challenges that we face in the future and I think are important for this conversation. I want to open things up to other board members who have questions.
Thank you, Martha. I appreciate the presentation. With, in our budget, we get about, let me look, about less than twenty percent from the state, but if you look at the Pennsylvania average, it's about thirty-eight-point-seven percent. So I have a couple of questions about that. How do we compare against others around us? And then I'll have another question.
I would have to follow up with you with, because I don't know the basic ed subsidies from the other districts in the county, so I'd have to follow up with that information. But part of our basic ed subsidy is based off of a sparsity index, a local effort index, and a poverty index, which we don't, aren't eligible for that particular index. So there are districts that definitely get more from state funding than we do.
And would you be able to speculate on how hold harmless policies at the state level affect the fact that we have such a low percent funding from the state versus other districts, especially in central Pennsylvania?
Hold, to explain, hold harmless is something that has been in place for several years that as state funding formulas are altered or changed, they basically say, the district will be funded at the level they are at, and will move forward with the new money at the new formula level, so that it isn't a case of overnight, you go from, I'm being funded at a certain amount, and overnight, you drop by two-hundred-thousand dollars or a million dollars or something like that. So that's what the hold harmless clause is. And right now, that is in place throughout the state. There is many, many, many discussions about whether or not that should be eliminated because we do have a funding formula in place, but not all the funding is pushed through that funding formula because of this hold harmless clause, but it does make a dramatic effect on certain districts across the state, where districts who have been, who have seen less growth or a drop-off in their student enrollment are being held at a rate of when they had more students. And so that money is going to that district even though their student population has dropped. And, and so, and then on the flip side, districts that are having large increases in student enrollment, they're not getting the extra funding because that hold harmless clause is in place using that money elsewhere. So as to specifically one district versus another, I don't have it, but that's in general the way the hold harmless works.
So that, from state policies, we have a large increase in pension liability, our increase in special education liability, and because of our district having relatively growth or whatever, has undue amount of burden of not receiving because of hold harmless policy. So at least three things are, because of state policies, have a negative effect on a district such as ourselves.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Q, I just wanted to clarify one, one thing for, for the audience in particular around the special education exception. So if I heard you correctly, if we don't apply for that special education exception with our preliminary budget, we do not have the opportunity to apply for it later.
That is correct.
And if it were determined that we needed to gain the benefit of what we would have otherwise received, we would have to go to an open referendum in order to...
You actually, if you don't, if you don't make the decision to go to referendum now, you can't do that later either. So it's, this is one of those all-or-nothing moments where if you don't apply for the exception, you can't apply for it three months from now. If you are considering a voter referendum and you don't do it now, you can't do it three months later because there's a specific timing on what can end up on the ballots. So this is an all-or-nothing moment.
Okay. And again, we've seen our costs, and I'm looking again at our chart, from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and thirteen, our costs have increased for special ed forty percent, while state and federal funding has increased only about eight percent. So it's virtually another unfunded mandate, one that we are happy to continue to support because it is the right thing to do, but the state is not kicking in nor the feds their portion of this funding.
It, it's interesting that you used the phrase unfunded mandate. Earlier today, I was speaking to Dr. Palmer, and I said, I'm going to try desperately through this presentation not to use that phrase. Because it's so used, but it truly is. And, and in the case of special education, I do not want anyone to think, we are not saying we don't want to educate these children, we need to provide these children with the supports they need, so that every child in this district can do the best they can do with the supports that they need. It's not that. Basically, what we're trying to make the point of is, state and federal funding isn't coming along and trying to fund those needs as well.
And hence why you're asking the board and making the recommendation that we should file for that exception?
Yes.
To help us with that expectation? Thank you. I, I just want to clarify something a little bit, because it's not exactly all or nothing. There are kind of, there's a couple of levels. There's, there's the deciding, we're not going to file for an exception, there's the level of we're going to file for the exception, and then there's the other level of we're going to, we're going for a referendum man. And, and we're not doing the referendum thing. And we're not doing the referendum thing. We're filing for the exceptions, and that doesn't necessarily mean we're going to use it.
That's correct.
That our final budget may not include that, but we're leaving that door open that we might...
That's correct.
We might use that.
We, we're applying, if we, if this budget is, we would be applying for $454,000 in that exception. At the end of the budget, if there was some, we refine things that we don't need the $554,000, we instead need $200,000. We would just use the $200,000. We'd be approved for the whole thing, but we'd only use the portion we need. In the past, we have applied for referendum exceptions several times. In one year, I clearly remember, because I just looked at it not that long ago, we received approval for over $800,000 worth of exceptions, and we used just under $200,000. So applying for it doesn't mean you're using it.
And just to be clear, when you say "use," you mean use it in our final budget?
In the final budget.
Which then determines what the proposed...
What the tax increase would be.
Yeah, exactly, what the tax increase.
Correct.
Not that we raise taxes and then not use the money.
No.
It's the other way around.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, important distinction. Any other questions? Sure, go ahead.
When we talk about things at the state level, I want to make a statement that contacting your local representatives is vastly important for the entire school district. Representative Kruger is, represents all of us in the state house. And we are actually split in half in terms of state senators. So if you're in Swarthmore and Rutledge, you have Senator Kearney. But if you're in Rose Valley or another province, you have Senator Killian. And with both Representative Kruger and Senator Killian, they both are up for election this year. So if you think that this is something that is important for you, and for me, it's definitely important, please contact all your representatives, but especially ones that are up for election, so they know what is important to you, so that when they are making priorities in the legislature, you can see what their priorities actually are.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions before we move on? Thank you, Ms. Q. So that takes us to audience recognition for items on the agenda tonight. So we have time for comments from the audience. Is there anyone who would like to speak tonight related to topics on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. We will move on. Our first item for action is the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes. The first, from the December 9th regular business meeting. And the second is the December 20th special meeting. And I so move. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Walkman? Any discussion? Okay, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The item passes nine to zero. Next up, we have multiple items for action in personnel. Are there any items on the list that anyone would like to separate from the rest? Okay. So bear with me as we walk through them. We first have the approval of leaves of absence for one member of the administrative staff and six certified staff as listed in the agenda. We have the approval of three resignations. Mark Finlayson, Director of Technology; James Lawrence, a bus driver; and Diane Tucker, a member of the custodial staff. We have the approval of two appointments. Virginia Place, a math teacher at the high school, replacing Whitney Wiltsi; and Samantha Hart, a special education teacher at the middle school, replacing Sierra Quentin. Next up, we have the approval of additional assignments for nine teachers as listed in the agenda. And these are the assignments that Dr. Palmer was referring to earlier in the superintendent's report. We have approval of additions to the 2019-2020 activities supplemental appointments as listed in the agenda. We have the acknowledgement of a teacher eligible for tenure effective October 31st, 2019, Alyssa Stamoulis, a special education teacher at SRS. We have the approval of two conference requests as listed in the agenda. We have the approval of additional 2019-2020 Power School Training and Development Work as stipulated in the agenda for an additional 200 hours at the rate of $37 per hour. We have the approval of 2019 Fall Athletic Supplementals as listed in the agenda. And lastly, we have the approval of the 2020 Summer Band and String Program as stipulated. All of these are as attached or described in the agenda. Do I have a motion? All right, Dr. Huff. And do we have a second?
Second.
I'll go with Dr. Downey. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The item passes, the items pass nine to zero. Moving on to curriculum, we have three items for action. We have the approval of the 2019-2020 school year-related service provider contracts as described in the agenda. We have the approval of the 2019-2020 school year tuition contracts for three students as listed in the agenda. We also have approval of two students for homebound instruction as listed in the agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Ballas? Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Semino? Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The items pass nine to zero. All right, moving on, we have two items for approval in finance. First, we have the approval of additional consulting hours to Power School at a rate of $210 per hour, not to exceed 15 hours. And we have the approval of the agreement that Dr. Palmer mentioned with Newman University. It's the Facility Temporary Licensing Agreement for the 2020 Strathaven Commencement Ceremony as stipulated in the agenda. Both of these are attached and described. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Dr. Huff? Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Walkman? Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The items pass nine to zero. Now we have time for comments from the audience related to things we didn't just vote on. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Okay. Do we have any old business? Do we have any new business? Okay, thank you. This meeting is adjourned.